Good evening, everybody. And I'd like to start by, starting with the Board of Ed introductions. We're having a joint meeting, as everybody knows, this evening for a good conversation, hopefully, about safety, security for our schools and for our public at large, as well as on mental health, for our, good mental health for our community. So with that, I'll start by opening it up for the Board of Education. And Deb, if I could just get a roll call for Board of Ed members for attendance?
Yes, Kathy Castelli, Erin Corso, Karen LeVac, Patty Purcell, Tammy Racchio, Pat Reynolds, Ray Ross, Mike Voto, Roxanne McKay.
Here.
All right. With that, we'll call to order the special town council meeting for Tuesday, March 6, 2018. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for the council?
Yes. Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Leturno?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Morganstein?
Here.
Chortel?
Testa?
Here.
Zandry? And Chairman Savoni?
Here. Both Councilor Chortel and Councilor Zandry did advise me that they have work obligations that preclude their attendance tonight. Before we get into our program, I just want to let people know what the format will be. This will be a combined presentation of the Board of Education Professionals and the town's Public Safety officials. After the presentation, there will be the opportunity for public comment. All the public officials participating in and attending this meeting are here out of concern for the safety of Wallingford's children. When you do come up to the mic, I'd ask you to please be respectful and considerate with your comments and questions, not just of us, but of all of those in attendance. As Chairman McKay already announced, please keep your cell phones off or silent. We are recording this meeting, so if you do want to make a comment or ask a question, I'd ask you to come up to one of the two microphones at the front of either aisle. Please start by stating your name and your address for the record. And we are scheduled to end this meeting at 8:00 PM. If you don't get the opportunity to speak, or you choose not to speak because maybe your camera's shy, these QR code forms are at the front of the room, and you can take these with you. There are links that you can go to to participate in a survey and leave your comments. And with that, I will turn things back over to those in front of me.
Good evening, everyone. I think what we'll do is we'll go down the line, introduce ourselves, and go forward with our presentation first. So I'm Sal Menzo, Superintendent, Wallingford Public Schools.
Good evening. My name is Craig Turner. I'm the Director of Youth and Social Services for the Town of Wallingford.
Good evening. I'm Richard Higard, Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director.
Good evening, William Wright, Police Chief.
Good evening, Steve Savatelli, Chief Sanitarian for the Health Department.
I think the reason why we wanted to start with introducing ourselves beside making sure everybody knows who we are, but also, this is the team that leads our town, our school district, when there are issues regarding any safety matters, be it weather, be it natural, other natural disasters, we've had the microburst that happened, and then also any tragic events regarding any adult or student issues. So we meet on a regular basis, and so we wanted to share with you this evening a little bit how we're responding and how we have responded to such issues as both student safety and mental health from our collaborative coordinated effort. We do not work in silos, which we're very fortunate, I have to say, and definitely go on the record as a superintendent, I am very privileged and blessed, really, to be able to work with individuals that are so committed to student and staff safety in our school district. I consider myself probably an oddity in the sense that a lot of my colleagues oftentimes talk about the challenges they have with communication between and amongst cooperative groups in their community. We never have those challenges. With the assistance of the Mayor, he has allowed us to call departments together to have thoughtful conversations. We don't always agree, but that's good, because oftentimes that's important, that we can come to consensus around what we feel is best for student and staff safety. So I was going to start just sharing a few of the layers of safety, and then we'll go through safety and then come back to mental health. But in terms of school safety, as I alluded to, under state statute, we have District Safety Committee that meets on a regular basis. We actually just met today. It was a scheduled meeting. But each school has a safety committee also made up of staff, there's parents, there's teachers, and administrators that meet to discuss the safety of the school, be it dealing with any type of potential event that might occur. So those meet regularly, they report back to the District Committee, so we're constantly reviewing and updating our plans, be it protocols for any type of disasters, any type of fire, any type of lockdown, as we said earlier, any type of natural disasters that may occur. There are a variety of different, in this particular setting, to talk about lockdowns. There are a variety of lockdown drills that we are practicing with our students. This is something that was, again, in collaboration with our different officials, especially the Police Department, was put in place this year. We have five different types of lockdown drills that are practiced. We have our traditional lockdown, we have one that's happening in or around our lunch periods, we have lockdown activities happening at dismissal, as well as arrival, and then we also have them at passing times. Because we feel, and based on the research that's brought forward to our committee, that the traditional situation of a lockdown is not always the best situation, because that's not always what's going to happen. It's just like a fire drill. We try to change up our fire drills and different traffic patterns, so that students don't just assume there's one way to be safe in our buildings. Along with the lockdown, and I would just draw your attention, if you know a teacher, or if there's one in the audience, or if you know anybody who works in the school system, I would ask them to show you their badges. Because on the back of the badge, which these were brought to all staff literally a week or two after unfortunate circumstances of Sandy Hook, it states the protocol that we ask all staff to participate in. The first one isn't to shelter in place, it's actually to evacuate. And I know there's been a lot of conversations about students in a lockdown where the potential situation of having them stay in one location could be harmful. The key thing is, the first, actually, the first comment is, use judgment. So we want the professional to be able to assess the situation, and then either evacuate, shelter in place, or actually take on, unfortunately, potentially, an intruder. So that's been always our cornerstone since we've instituted this progress and this process of the badge. So I just, again, I know that that's been a common question that we've been asked even by students, and I think that it's hard for us to practice every scenario for a lockdown, but we are trying to look at those and having conversations with our students about what are the proactive measures they should take. As I mentioned, in collaboration with these individuals to my left, we've been also very fortunate as a school district to receive four rounds of security grant funding, and we've taken advantage of each of those rounds. I'm just going to go through some of the measures that have been taken. You probably know about a lot of these, you might not know about some, but I'm going to go through some of them, and I'm sure elaboration could be provided by our staff to my left. As the first round of security funds, the first thing we did was we put in a camera solution throughout all of our buildings in our district. And as you might have recently read in the newspaper, the cameras can be accessed by the Police Department once the panic buttons, which were also in the first phase, were installed in our schools. So if a panic button is activated, cameras at the Police Department are then activated so they can actually monitor what's going on in that particular school. That was something that we had put in place. We also, with lockdowns, we have what are called the blue lights. And blue lights go off in the event of a lockdown in areas like your cafeteria or your gymnasium that are loud, and students might be in, but they can't hear the announcement of a lockdown, but the light signifies something's wrong, we need to stop, listen to our teacher, and get into a safe location. So that was another layer of security that was purchased through our grants. Also, all of our schools' external doors have contacts, so if a door's opened, the main office is notified. So as our schools, most of you know, all of our perimeter doors should be shut at all times, that we should be having flow of visitors through one entrance. If an exterior door, which we know, a lot of our schools have many exterior doors just because of the architectural structures that they are, if a door's open, left ajar, we have a report that's made right to the office electronically. So that was installed in the first phase of that grant process. In addition, we have, obviously, the keyless entry. We also had new hardware that was put on many of our classrooms, because that was a key area. In addition, we continue to work on our development of our radio system, and I'll let the Chief explain more of that when he speaks, because we have a large project that the town has undertaken and kindly enough included the school system in this project. It's a huge project with a tremendous amount of resources for our students and our staff to protect them. We also have, and if you pull up to one of our schools, you might have noticed that the windows have numbers on them. All the windows in our schools, it's very subtle, have a number on the outside, so in the unfortunate event, there was an emergency, the people on the outside, the first responders could look at the map, because they have all updated maps electronically, as well as they could print paper, that have those numbers, so they could determine where the potential issue is from the outside of the building, rather than having to worry about number coding from the inside of the building. So that was something that we also conducted. As I said, all the floor plans have been updated and have been provided for all the authorities. We also have two sets of Knox boxes. A Knox box, for those of you who might not know, have emergency keys, and they have a special locks, and those are strategically placed on each school property to allow for first responders to enter our buildings in a safe manner if necessary. Again, those are really some of the structural changes that have gone on over the years. In total, there's been, from grant awards, there's been over half a million dollars awarded to Wallingford. Most recently, we received just a small grant of $17,000 to finish off some blue lights and to add a few additional cameras. We continue, if you follow with our budget process, we always are adding security initiatives in our strategic plan budget, and it's coded as safety. And some of those might be simple, changing out windows, might be changing out doors. I know they're not flashy, but they are important to student's safety. So I'll pause there and just pass it on down the line in terms of other safety measures occurring at our schools.
So good evening. Our connection and collaboration with the school revolve around two or three major themes. The first is every two years, for the last six years, every two years, we have administered a survey through the high schools to identify student behaviors and student perceptions on a number of issues. Those surveys have resulted in some activities taking place both within the community, at the school level, and beyond in the community level in terms of the services that we provide. One of the issues that was most prominent in all three years that we've done the survey, so that's 2013, 2015, and 2017, was the issue of depression and thoughts of, or actions towards suicide. So we have worked with both the athletic department in both high schools to actually speak to the coaches, working with the athletic directors, to help them identify kids that may be at risk for depression in particular, and how to respond to, more effectively respond to, any concerns of acute depression or thoughts that children are either sharing or indicating they have suicide ideations. One of the other components for us is we are involved in the alternative to suspension program for children that violate the alcohol-drug policy for the school system, where they will meet with one of our staff for a period of hours, along with their parents for a period of hours, to at least learn more about the particular substance or substances they're using, not only the pharmacological side of that, but also the impact that it has on their lifestyle, and how it's impacting them as an individual in school, at home, with their peers, and in the community. The other opportunities that we have is to be at the table for PPTs, working with children to try to make sure that the educational plans that may be available to them occur, so that they get a better delivery of services, and that the parents have a much better handle on that process. We actually are advocates for the parents' concerns for their child, and work to ensure that we can get as many services as possible that they're eligible for and/or entitled to. That's a difficult area to navigate if you're not used to either the language or the process, so we provide both an understanding of the language, and we're at the table to advocate for the process on behalf of the child and the parent. We do not work for the school system when we do that, we work for the parents with the school system, just want to be clear on that. The other issue is that we spend quite a bit of time working with the elementary schools with an anti-bowling program that we bring into each school for second graders and fourth graders, and we actually use high school students as part of that conversation to take them into the schools to talk to the kids about those issues. Our concern in the, in the community at large is promoting mental health, and that's kind of a vague phrase that people don't necessarily understand, or certainly don't have a common definition for, so I just want to give you one that we use in our office to get a sense of what that looks like. And it's taken from the World Health Organization's definition. "Mental health is a state of well-being in which the individual realizes his or her own abilities can cope with the normal stresses of life, can work productively and fruitfully, and is able to make a contribution to his or her community." So if we're going to raise our children to do that, we win. And if we can be a part of doing that, then the community wins. And when there are mental health problems or mental illness issues, we can help direct parents through guidance and working with the parents or the student, provide parenting strategies for certain elements, work with students in terms of guiding or changing their behavior, but when it gets to the mental illness issue, which is the clinical side of it, we will make referrals or connect you with other organizations in the area that are much more adept, qualified, and capable of handling those issues. So if you have that in your house, or if you know parents or families that may need that, we can certainly steer you in that direction. Thank you.
Good evening. The Fire Departments in each town have very vast different involvement in this discussion. For Wallingford, we cover several areas through emergency management, we protect the town in large storm events, like Dr. Menzo mentioned, tomorrow's weather and the snow, we get involved in that. Fire Department response involves life, safety, protection of your property, and lives primarily, and in that, we have ambulance, we have paramedic service, so we're very involved in the response side. Through our Fire Marshal's Office, we're involved in protecting, through code enforcement and evaluations on that side, so we look at buildings and such and evaluate them for safety, and then all the other pertinent regulations and such. So besides, let me rephrase that, participating in the monthly meetings Dr. Menzo mentioned, so we participate in the district meeting, as well as select school meetings, where we look at policies, procedures, responses, and things like that, prevention, the numbers on the windows, making sure there's egress, because besides the acts of violence that we're concerned with, we have potential for fire. So our charge is to get people out of buildings, and we want to make sure that is always a foundation that we build from, so that is through the Fire Marshal's Office and our involvement, and annual inspections of each of the buildings, all 12 of the school buildings get inspected. We participate in fire drills, and then we assist in where we can with the police and doing the lockdown drills. So again, we're looking at it from a different set of optics, we're looking at egress, whereas they're looking at all the other different issues. The, see, the Fire Marshals, I think that's about it for Fire Department.
Good evening, William Wright, from the Police Department. A lot of what I have to say has been covered already, but I'll certainly go through it again, because it is important. So we are a member of the district-wide School Safety Committee, there was, as Dr. Menzo mentioned, a meeting today. In addition, each school also has its own security meeting that's monthly, which we're a part of. The lockdown drills, state statute requires boards to hold crisis response drills at least three times a year, we're much more proactive in that regard here, at least five times a year. As Chief Higard just mentioned, the classrooms are numbered externally, so our inbound resources can determine the outside, from the outside, the classroom that they're looking for. Most recently, all of our police officers will be in possession of that external card key that Dr. Menzo mentioned, that will give us access to the schools should we need to get in there in an emergency. Each of our Mark Cruisers contains a map book, which contains, among other things, the floor plan for each school. As Dr. Menzo mentioned, the town is currently undergoing a significant upgrade to our two-way radio system. A large component of that is delivering radios to the Board of Education, so that each school has a good handful of two-way radios that they can communicate directly with our communications center should they need to. That is not available to them right now. It's important to us that should the administrators of the schools have to vacate the office and get out of there, that they can communicate with our communications center without interruption. Dr. Menzo mentioned the camera system. We will light up that system should one of these schools go into lockdown. We know that the cameras are of high quality, but we also recognize that there's not a camera in every hallway and every little nook and cranny of every school, but certainly what we have now is really nice to have, and it's certainly better than having nothing at all. On our response side, our community police division, which is staffed by Sergeant Sam Selsky and her team, and our youth division, which is a civilian-based operation headed up by Amanda Miranda, have daily interaction with school officials. Not a day goes by that our resources are not in the schools for one reason or another. Lockdown and safety drills, counseling of students in different environments, the programs that we run, I have pages and pages here of the programs that we run. Each one of our community policing officers is assigned to one or more of the schools to interact with the principal as necessary, and certainly at least weekly. From an administrative standpoint, Dr. Menzo and I have a wonderful relationship. There are times that we're on the phone with each other 10 or 15 times a day if that's what we need to do, and there's other times where it might be once or twice a week. And I'm grateful to echo his comments, to have that relationship with him, because as he said, that is not present in a lot of districts, and I'm grateful for that. In an area that I know a lot of people don't like to talk about, active shooter training, we build continually active shooter components into all of our firearm scenarios. This coming April, when the schools are out for break, we will have another week-long training program at one of the schools. It's an eight-hour day, it takes a full week to get our entire agency through that. That's not new to us, we've been doing that for years and years and years. Furthermore, and in appreciation to Chief Higard and his team, we're now working collectively together on getting his team of medics certainly into warm zones in active shooter situations, areas that we've taken control of, areas that aren't cold yet, the scene might still be unfolding in one certain section of the school in this area, in this example, but where we can get his medics in, under lethal cover from our officers to start that evacuation process, and I'm grateful to his team for that. That's very forward-thinking on their part. We have a lot of work to do there, that is something really to overcome, and I'm grateful to Chief Higard and his team. We are a full-service police department, this community demands it, and we think we provide it. We're honored to have been asked tonight to come and sit here and answer your questions. We truly, truly enjoy the relationship that we have with the community. I know there's a number of appearance, I see them here that were with us a couple Friday mornings ago, right after a couple of events in town, and I'm grateful to you for giving us the time to work through those issues. I know that it was an unsettling time, we've had a positive result from both of those issues, and we're appreciative of you giving us the time to work through that. Thank you very much.
Good evening. The Health Department has also had a presence on the School Security Committee, providing input where it is needed due to our extensive experience in emergency preparedness. From the Health Department aspect, since 2015, we have implemented a health improvement plan, and in that health improvement plan, there have been seven priority focus areas on improving the general health and wellness of the community, two of which are violence prevention and mental health, okay? So we've been working in these focus areas with community partners such as the Wallingford Police Department, Board of Education, Youth and Social Services, the YMCA, and combating these issues on a community-wide level for the last little over two and a half years now, so. And we did attend the meeting today, which I think always bears good fruit, we always find out, learn good things after having good discussion in these meetings.
I just would like to circle back around to mental health from a school standpoint, because I think it's important that we share that. Before I do so, I do want to thank all of our staff, certified, non-certified staff throughout our district for their continued support in all of our measures we take. It is incredible, every person who comes in our building is part of our family, and they treat all of our students like that, like they're part of theirs, and we could not be more grateful for all of our staff, their commitment to our children. And we have incredible people, if you do not know that already, I encourage you to get to know them, because we have amazing people who have such big hearts for what they do every day. In addition, I just wanted to mention that our safety plans, that's what these all are, they're required by the state every year, so we're not allowed to slack off and not review our plans. We have to submit these every single year. One of the latest things that we've been working on, and we're very fortunate that we have a community relationship with Toyota Presents, the Oakdale Theater, because that is going to, in a God-forgotten scenario where, let's just take a natural disaster, you know, we had Sheen lose its roof one year, if we had to reunify families with their children, we would bus the students to Oakdale, and then from there, you would pick up your children in a safe location. So we're fortunate, we have that resource, and they were willing. I sent one email, got an email right back from them saying, absolutely, let's meet and talk. So we have all the maps planned, we have everything organized, we did have a little unfair advantage, because we did have to have high school there at one point, so we knew the layout of the land, I know where the green room is, which was our nurse's office, you know, I know all those locations, but it's been really, again, that's just another characteristic of the collaboration we receive, in addition from other resources like SCOW, Boys and Girls Club, Coalition for a Better Wallingford, as well as the YMCA, all of us working together. But in terms of mental health, we do do annual training for all of our staff in mandated reporting, obviously bullying training, we have sexual harassment training, suicide prevention. We've also run a course in collaboration with a variety of resources on suicide prevention for adults, so they learned the warning signs, QPR training. We also have increased our mental health professionals in our schools, especially over the last three to four years. This year, if you're following our budget, we have a recommendation for four additional mental health professionals at our elementary schools. We are trying to address and offer supports to our youngest students and their families, and we are trying to layer those services. We have a tremendous amount of programming in district. I would encourage you, if you have not looked at our budget, we have two brand-new sections that we added this year, that talk about the staff and our specialized programming for students who have emotional needs. We have now a pre-K2 program, a 3-5 program, a middle school program, and a high school program. Nine years ago, when I arrived, we had a middle school, high school program that was small, we brought it back into our system, and that's grown, and now we've grown from the other levels, and so we're very, very proud of that. We have incredible staff that have brought that to our attention in collaboration with parents, making that work. We do have a tip line, if you're not aware, it's an anonymous tip line, so if people have concerns, we do monitor that. In our classrooms, you might have heard, if you have children or grandchildren, or have read in the newspaper, we have responsive classroom in our elementary schools, followed by second step, which is another, a social-emotional learning opportunity for students to gain their experiences and proactive and appropriate communication with their peers, and then we have advisory at the middle school and high school level. We have, as the Chief said, his staff pretty much take up residence in our schools for a period of time, with bullying, presentations, internet, safety, we are just very fortunate to have that resource. We also are happy to announce that we're embarking on a pilot program with Child Guidance Center in Meriden, we were selected to work with them, working with students who are dealing with trauma. So we've worked with families, they will offer consent, and their social workers will be coming into our schools to offer additional services for students who have experienced trauma at the elementary, middle school, or high school level. So trying to layer those supports in every way possible. So again, I just wanted to share some of those opportunities on mental health from the school district standpoint.
If there's nothing else from our presenters, then we will now entertain public comment. Before we start, if I could get a show of hands to see how many people are interested in coming forward and...
and asking a question, just so I can get a sense as to whether or not we'll need time limits. Not a lot of hands. Okay. So if you could start by lining up at either microphone, and we will alternate. And I will start on my right with the tie-dyed shirt. Ma'am, if you could come forward to the microphone, your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Parmley, 36 Bristol Street, Wallingford. My main question was about how lockdowns are decided. And we had threats here where lockdowns were not called. So I was looking for a standard operating procedure within the schools of who's your first go-to, your second go-to, exactly how it's decided that somebody is not a threat. And that's a real big concern for me.
So I guess you answered your own question, actually, in the sense that it is decided based on the level of threat that that situation presents. In the situation that you're alluding to, I'll talk about the elephant in the room, which is the fact that at the end of a school day, prior to dismissal, there was a report to the office that a student had yelled, "Get down, take cover." That student, the student that we believed had done that, was intercepted, shall we say, within minutes of it coming to the attention of the main office. That quote-unquote, if I could finish, that quote-unquote threat was resolved. There was no need to put the rest of the students in an anxiety-filled situation at that point. So it's based on judgment of the administration, which I totally support them taking that action. And I think they handled it very, very well because, again, it was mitigated very quickly. So I just wanted to share that particular experience, and I don't think we would have done it differently.
And I thank you for that, but my question does come down to, what happened was you had a student not saying, "Hi, I'm the person shooting." You had a person saying, "Get down, take cover." So how do you, how did you assess within a four-minute period?
Well, there was nobody, again, we could talk more about this, but there was nobody in the hallway at the time, and I don't really want to go through the specifics because still it is an open case for the school district. So it would be inappropriate to go into significant specifics at this point. But the fact is that, again, the professionals at the time did make a determination. There was not a situation of a threat to go into a lockdown at that time. You know as well, because you were at the fire, at the police department that Friday before, that as soon as we, we have to take everything very seriously because we know your children have their cell phones. You know that they communicate. You shared that with everybody, that they communicate frequently. So if we went into a lockdown unnecessarily, the level of concern that would have been raised unnecessarily would have been inappropriate. So again, we have to be trusted with professional judgment, and that's what we would have, we did at that situation. And I totally support our administrative team for their decision.
And I understand that, and I thank you, but the thing is, is that you had at least a dozen or more students believing that there was a lockdown and should be a lockdown. So you did not, there was no all-clear at the end? There was no, this ended?
Well, again, there was no lockdown call, so there was no all-clear to be made. If a lockdown had been called, then all-clear would have been made. So again, I think this is a situation, again, I would encourage you to reach out to your building administrator, like we've discussed before.
I did. It was my call, and that was it, which, yeah.
So again.
Four questions. That one sentence was not satisfactory.
So again, I think you heard the rationale. It was professional judgment, and I would stand behind the professional judgment that was made at that time.
Okay, and I did have one other question. I apologize. It came up. Sir, just to the left of Dr. Menzo, I apologize. You had mentioned that you go to...
If you could get closer to the microphone for the benefit of the recording.
Sorry, shortness.
You can lower it.
So you had mentioned that you reach out to coaches and to teams for mental health. What about kids who don't play sports?
So our reach out to kids who don't play sports for mental health issues is limited in terms of accessibility and time. We actually will provide those services on the basis of individuals who are referred to us, either through the school system, self-referral, other parents will provide those services. But there is, at this point, there's no largess in terms of reaching out. I think the district may do other things to address that besides us.
But all the, and all the moderators, all the staff that are involved, such as marching band or other clubs and activities, drama club, other non-athletic events, they all receive the same training on reporting behaviors that might be of concern. They all know the protocols that they follow. They get the annual training. And we have definitely had our advisors, they've been in these roles for many years, and they definitely have shared concern. And they're acted on swiftly in collaboration with the family because it is a sensitive time, and it's, you know, we want to make sure that we're working together collaboratively with the family to make sure that we're sensitive to the nature of the issue, but also making sure that, most importantly, that student's getting the services that he or she needs.
Okay, well, I do ask that, you know, not everybody's in a club, and some of the kids who are not in clubs or not in sports are some of the most at risk. So it seems like a loophole to me.
Well, no, but that goes back to, if I mentioned earlier, all of our staff, not just specific staff. All of our staff are trained in annual precautions every year. We have to do annual trainings. They're required. They have to sign off on those trainings. They have to document that they've gone through these trainings. So every classroom teacher, every nurse, our parent educators in many instances, they all have to go through this training. So the layers are all there. And again, I would say that there's definitely universal precautions. Now, again, is there a situation where something comes to our attention from outside the school? That's when we work together very closely. But our counselors, our social workers, our psychologists, I don't want you to leave thinking that we only train a certain amount of people and we're missing a lot of students.
Okay, because that was just a very specific statement about sports and coaches.
As always, I want to thank you because you do, we've been together for nine years. You ask excellent questions that bring up other questions, so thank you for doing that because that helps. I really appreciate that.
And I do thank everybody in the room who took the time out to be here tonight.
Mr. Liu.
Jared Liu. I live at 59 Curtis Avenue and want to thank the committee for their transparency and their collaboration that definitely came through in your presentation, so thank you very much. Two quick questions, I believe, to Chief Wright and Dr. Menzo. Chief Wright, in your professional opinion, is it ever an asset to have someone in the building, faculty, staff, parent, whoever, with a gun in an active shooter situation? Could that ever be an asset to you? And then to Dr. Menzo, do we have a policy, particularly thinking about folks who report up through you, faculty and staff, but certainly we could think through contractors, parents, anyone who is on school property, the building, in their car, et cetera, not to have a gun? And what would the repercussion be?
So to answer your question, I am not a fan of guns on the school property at all, right? So. I'm a parent, right? So. This is a touchy subject, and I know that it's a national debate that's going on right now, right? So. And it's no secret. I'm not a fan of it, you know, personally, and I'll publicly say that. I will offer you this. The state of Connecticut offers, through state statute, the opportunity for school districts to employ armed guards. They don't necessarily have to be police officers, but there is a program that's very closely monitored by the Police Officer Standards and Training Council, right? So they provide the training to those folks. They need to be recently retired, in good standing, police or correction officers. They need to maintain a certain level of competency in a lot of things, including firearms. But I'll offer you this. Absent that or some other official who's armed, no. I don't believe that we need more guns on school property.
In terms of your question, there's state law that doesn't allow firearms on school grounds. So if there's an event where we become aware of that, be it a student, staff member, person visiting our campus, the police are called and appropriate actions are taken. So that is clearly defined, and that is the statute that we follow, the law that we follow. And we've always practiced a relationship with the chief on that. Unfortunately, every so often, we do have circumstances where we need to check into circumstances that are suspicious. They're right there with us.
So from a staffing perspective, no faculty, no staff?
No, no, it's not permitted on school grounds.
Thank you.
Ayla. Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Ayla Copfer. I live on 35 Wiffle Tree Road. I appreciate all the efforts and physical upgrades for our safety. My questions aim more towards the, for lack of a better word, I'll call it school climate. Two points. A, what happens after the suspension? Like in the case we just recently had, when the student is suspended and then comes back to school, which I hope. Are there any protocols or procedures to reintegrate him/her to the school community? And second, kind of piggybacking on my, on the previous person, identifying students who might need help for mental health reasons? And I agree with her. I think just the coaches might not catch all the kids, even all the programs that the high schools do. And I appreciate it. My son, you know, has been very involved in that. But usually the, excuse the expression, the oddballs are not in those clubs or programs. So basically, my question is, can we get more staff to help guidance counselors and psychological and social workers in the school identify and help those kids? And B, can we get even more programs? You know, like funky programs that those oddballs maybe would participate and come together with other students? So I'm asking the town, would you be willing to find more funds to get more programs and more support for the staff? Or do, does the administration see any more state funds, any grants, anything? Thank you.
So I'll take your questions in parts. Number one, in terms of any student who is suspended. Suspension is, and this is where there was some confusion in the newspaper, and unfortunately, then people comment without having the full knowledge that in a circumstance that is of a grave discipline matter, the first thing, the only action that a superintendent could take is suspension. We can't automatically go to expulsion or anything beyond that. According to state statute, according to due process rights of a student, I am allowed to suspend a student up to 10 days pending further investigation. During that 10 days, the investigation has to occur, and we have to determine whether or not it's an expellable act or if it's not an expellable act. During that time, we're meeting with the family. We're talking about whether or not there are any emotional needs, social needs, any benefits that we could help them with. We're keeping them usually up to date with their homework, providing them classwork. At that point, when we determine it is an expellable act, then there's a hearing, at which there's two parts, two parts to that hearing. The first part is determine whether or not truly it was an expellable act. So the Board of Education has to make that determination. If it is, then the board comes back, and they have to determine the length of the expulsion. Reason why I bring that second part up is that's exactly where we talk about the specific opportunities we're going to afford that student, not just academically, but also socially and emotionally. I have to say, I'm a little bit of a crazy superintendent because I see students who are expelled as an opportunity to get to know me. Many people in this room probably don't want to know me as well as they do, but the fact is, I see the benefit I could offer them in terms of meeting with them throughout their expulsion, talking to them about career and college opportunities, checking in with them on their grades, checking in with them on social-emotional development issues as part of my responsibility as an educator. I value that opportunity. I have written letters of recommendation for students who have had those unfortunate mishaps because I've seen them grow in those experiences. That is what I take on as superintendent. It's not statutorily required. It's not Board of Ed telling me to do it. It's just the right thing to do. And the administrators, the building administrators, as I said in a letter, nobody wants a discipline to get. That's not why we went to school. That's not why I became an educator, is to dole out discipline. And none of our administrators want to either, and they take that very seriously. And they're part of those meetings with me. So every child through their, if they are expelled, there is a plan put in place, not just academic, social, and emotional. There's, as I said, we work on student success plans together. So we talk about what do they want to do after high school if they're a high school-age student. In addition, upon or prior to their re-entry, we meet and we come up with a transition plan. The school counselor is there, the principal or assistant principal is there, and we talk through that plan together with the family and the student. And we ask them, what are the, what are the potential touch points they need to make that transition successful? So we have really tried to take those proactive measures. My secretary knows that as soon as we have a circumstance where there's a student who might be in this situation, we already start scheduling those updated meetings because we want to keep that connection. We don't want them to feel disenfranchised from the school district. That's not our goal. In terms of other mental health services, as I said earlier, we did put in the budget for elementary. We just recently, two years ago, increased the social services at our high schools. So we kind of go through our whole system on a regular basis and try to bring attention to different levels. If you look at those budget documents, you'll notice that our special ed numbers went up 100 by 100 students in one year. And a lot of those students are social-emotional opportunities for growth. So that's why the services, we put those in place. We continue, we've our alternative high school program. We added just recently, a couple, three years ago now, a full-time psychologist there. So we've increased services. We're always looking to do more, and that is always part of our conversation. So we've been trying to be respectful of the system and moving forward in that regard. In terms of other activities for students, I'm proud because when you do look at the wealth of activities that are offered at our high schools in particular and our middle schools, there's a wide range of opportunities from anime to a variety of different clubs that are not necessarily mainstream clubs. Can we always do more? Absolutely. Students, and this is something that we could take from tonight, we could continue to message to students that if they have an interest in a club, they just have to find an advisor and work with their principals to make sure that they fill out, there's a paperwork, and move forward with it. Students are never, from my experience, have never been turned away from having a club at either school. So we need to continue to message that, and I think that's a great point. So I'm going to make note, I did make note of that, to bring that back.
So if I could add to the question about the coaches, there may be some misunderstanding as to what prompted that. Part of it was the data that we received, most of it was the data that we received in the survey, but the coaches were seen as a missing opportunity in the past because some, while some of them are teachers in the district, some are not. And they actually approached us because they have the opportunity to see kids in a pretty rigorous setting, pretty intense, high-anxiety-producing settings for athletes, and they're not really sure how to react to what they're seeing. And I think as Dr. Menzo identified, the professional development for the social workers, the school counselors, and the teachers that they get is not necessarily provided to coaches. So we're trying to fill that gap. That is not to say that we're the only program that's working with the professionals in the district to make them more aware of those issues. It was just an opportunity for us to do something very specific with a group of people that are coaching your children who ask for help.
On my left.
My name is Mary Lou Sedonis.
If you could lower the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I live at 40 Briar Lane, Meriden. I'm not here to ask a question. I'm here to share with everyone here. I contemplated this and prayed over this for a while, and then I asked my cantor in our church to write up a petition for me. He's also a very brilliant lawyer. And he wrote this petition for me. And I went to various places in Meriden and Wallingford. I went to McDonald's. I went to Stop &amp; Shop in Wallingford. I'm going to The Edge on Saturday. And basically, it's a petition that asks our legislators and our state leaders to have a mandatory law that all schools have metal detectors. We have them in our courthouses. We have them in our airports. Some inner-school cities already have metal detectors. New Haven does. Bridgeport does. New York does. Why not all the schools? It'd be the first line of defense for our children. If somebody got into the school and had a knife or a gun, then the people inside the school, the officers or whoever who's in charge, would have at least uh, alert that something is going to happen. It might save some lives, a lot of lives. Mayor Dickinson was kind enough to let me come here today. And he also allowed me to have these petitions outside this building if anyone is interested in signing this petition. All these petitions are going to Senator Susio, Congressman, and then he will present them to the legislator. It's a beginning. It's a start to save our children's lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you. On my right, Pam.
Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Um, my name is Julia Lafon. Um, I live at ten Cortland Drive. Um, currently a senior at Lyman Hall. Very excited about graduating. Um, I'd like to thank everyone who's in front of me and everyone who's behind me for being here. Because that means that you support not only my safety, but the safety of my friends and the safety of my teachers. Because everyone who I, who is much important to me, um, is at my school. Um, and I love going to school. So, um, so I was fortunate enough to go on the field trip with, uh, some of the Lyman Hall kids and some of the Sheehan kids, uh, to talk with, uh, some of the Board of Ed members and the administrators, uh, to uh, figure out what we would like to plan on doing for, um, March fourteenth and other things that we would like to change within our school about safety. Um, a lot of things that we talked about was mental illness. Um, we talked about, um, different ways that we could involve, uh, kids in our school, to just come together and talk to each other, because I feel like that's the biggest thing. Because I notice it every day, that a lot of the kids in my school, nobody really likes to talk to everybody. I mean, it's kind of like, oh, that girl over there, I don't know who she is. I don't feel like talking to her. But I, I'm the president of the key club, and I always, um, encourage people in the key club to talk to new people every day. Because you don't know what effect you might have on them. And so one of, like, the proposals that I, um, proposed, I guess, at that meeting was to have a sort of, um, student center at the high school level where you would have, um, people who are seniors, who are trained to, just to talk to people. Um, because like, especially if someone who's going through a lot, they not, they don't necessarily want to talk to adults. Because sometimes adults can be a little intimidating. Um, that sometimes you just want to go to a friend or somebody you don't know anonymously. Um, and we talked about just training students to do that. And it's not like they're going to give them psychology or psychological advice. It's just like having somebody to talk to. Um, and so I was wondering if that sort of student center, student support center could possibly become something and be funded for.
From my point of view, and I know we talked as an administrative team after, and what Julia is, um, referring to is we were able to get a group of students in here last Wednesday. And I have to say, uh, it was probably the most energizing moment of that week for me. Because if we put into hands, uh, into the hands of students, a lot of the problems, um, I think our solutions would be much easier. Um, that idea that came forward, we, we would like to continue, continue to consider. Uh, we have to actually work with this person next to me because he already does some work with, uh, high school students that might help out. Um, so we definitely are, are continuing, continuing to do that. And I know on the day of the fourteenth, you're offering an opportunity for students to kind of talk in an environment like that. So we kind of like our little pilot, and we'll be looking to re-engage that whole group, as we mentioned when, before we left, to kind of talk about how the day went and what do we want to move forward, because remember, it wasn't just about the fourteenth. So to the answer your question, definitely, we're going to need your help.
Okay. And, um, I also just want to explain what's going on in the fourteenth, at least for Lyman Hall and Sheehan. Is that, um, instead of a walkout, because as Mr. Corso said, as the great principal he is, is that it goes against all the safety protocols that they put in place to keep a, a student safe, um, is to, um, have a walk in instead of a walk out. And it's a, going to be, um, a place where we'll have a moment of silence, for the victims of the Florida shooting. And there'll also be an open discussion. So it'd just kind of be like either one question or two questions. So that's, that's, that's it. I just sort of like to just throw that out there.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erin Conroy. I live on thirteen Burke Heights Drive. I graduated from Sheehan High School in twenty fifteen, and I'm proud to be from Wallingford. I'd like to commend Julia on her action and make sure you register to vote and think about running to kick these old guys out. I would like to ask the committee what they're doing to, um, look at our, our cultural issues. Because while it's important to intercept mental health issues, um, while, while we can see them, changing our culture is even more important, because these kids get pushed outside because we have issues that like institutionalized racism and socio-economic saddest shame. Um, it's hard to be poor and it's hard to be different. And so how are we going to change our culture and how are we going to take out the people who were toxic to that culture? And how are we going to bring our kids up? Because that's, that's the only, what, the only thing we could actually do.
No, and I wish that it was just the school district's problem to solve. Um, because we only have, as you know, um, students in our, uh, control or, or, our environment for approximately five and a half to six hours a day, five days a week, for approximately forty weeks during the school year. Um, so it's a community initiative. Um, in our district, I could speak from that point of view, and then I think, um, I'll share with you what we're doing as a community also, because I think it's important. But as a school community, it's just, it starts with, um, the educational opportunities, as I mentioned, starting at the very early age with responsive classroom. Um, that really has taken flight due to the hard work of our elementary principals who are behind me on either side, who have done incredible amount of training in that area, working with their staff. Um, responsive classroom has really taken on, um, the whole concept of appreciating everyone for his or her differences, similarities, knowing that we have more similarities than differences. Um, and off of that, over the last two years, we've taken that to a next level with Second Step, which is another level programming, um, dealing with social, emotional learning, but it extends to the families. So it's actually engaging, engaging families in the conversation that are occurring in the classroom on that level. Um, so we've really tried to ingrain at an early age, um, some of those programs to help, help really try to mitigate some of those challenges that we see as we move to the middle school. Over the last three years, the middle school has taken on advisory. So now they have ongoing advisory classes where teachers, um, and having been a middle school teacher, um, they're, we're, we're in an interesting place. We're not too young, we're not too old, uh, we're a little off-center, as they say. Um, but that's a good thing. Um, so we are engaging our staff to work with our students and develop those relationships, um, so that students don't fall through the cracks. And it's all hands-on-deck approach. At the high school, similarly speaking, there's advisory, we have office hours, which allows students to go and seek out support, seek out opportunity. Um, and that's where our counselors have really come in. We have amazing guidance counselors or counselors, as I say, school counselors at both schools, that really have, um, over the last few years, because we had an audit of our counseling program, we've really let, raised the level of services they're able to provide. Um, but it's a constant effort. So what we believe is that it's not just, it can't just be the school district. So we've been working with, um, the Wallingford, Healthy Wallingford Project, um, which is basically the Wallingford Health Improvement Plan. And as part of that, our first initiative was Choose Kindness. Um, and so we have what's called Eat, Play, Unplug. So eat healthy, um, to get some exercise, and then unplug and try to separate yourself from the anxieties of the world around you. So the first phase of that has been Choose Kindness, and that's really been a focus for our district, as well as all of our departments. You'll see there's a banner in the back with the beautiful trees, um, on Main Street. Um, that talks about that initiative. Um, but we're continuing to try to wrap our arms around this. One of the biggest challenges, and what we could all use your support is, is with the social media. Um, the social media is the most significant challenge that we face, um, in our schools, not just with students. Um, and that we really need your help with that. Um, and we have presented, we had a, a screening of the movie Screenagers at two cinemas that were donated to us this fall. Uh, we had sold-out crowds. It was a fantastic event. We also just recently had a woman who came and, um, shared her information with all of our three, five students on Don't Press Send. Um, making sure that when you're about to press send on an email or a text message, you rethink it, because once it's out there, you most often can't take it back. Um, so we've been really trying to work in that area, but we do understand there is a lot of subtlety. So we're looking at curriculum also, making sure our literature is wide range of literature, so it covers a lot of, um, topics and issues. Making sure it's culturally diverse, as well as, um, you know, gender diversity in our literature, all the different areas. Because we don't want to put ourselves in a position where our students aren't open to alternatives. Um, and aren't open to understanding that our world is made up of a diverse group of people and we're one large family. Um, so we've been really working on it at multiple levels. Um, but again, I don't think we have the solution. Um, I think we're always searching for that. So if there are people in this room who want to join the crusade, um, to help us work in that regard, please, feel free to contact any of us, because, um, we really need your help. Um, I don't know, Steve, did you want to add anything to the Healthy Wallingford?
In terms of the Healthy Wallingford Initiative, um, it's one of those things that we're looking at right now in terms of, as Dr. Menzo mentioned, the social media. Um, while that can be a great help in some situations, in others it could be a huge detriment. So again, I would just reiterate that any help that we can get in terms of that, to provide positive messaging instead of negative, um, it would definitely advance any agenda that the town has moving forward. Anything Craig, you want to touch on?
So this is a fascinating conversation about social media. If you think back ten, ten or fifteen years ago, we really didn't think there was necessarily a need to teach kids how to balance a checkbook in school, but now we do that. So they can understand what debt is, what being able to pay your bills is, and what living your life responsibly in a financial manner is. So we never really focused on that, and now we have a whole day set aside where the kids learn life skills in that regard. So we are entering that age for social media. Not only how to use it well, but to understand the risks and the detriments by using it too much or in the wrong way. And it is a major issue that comes into play with depression and suicide issues. Because kids are reading things either about themselves that are untrue, that are just horrible, or they believe that things are true for other people when they're not, where it gives the impression that everybody else is living a better life than they do. So there's a lot of education that has to go on, because most of it, if you broke it down, are lies. And believing lies is the first step to being really confused about what reality is. And kids are very predisposed to believing the lies that their peers tell for one reason and one reason only. Approval and fitting in. So this is a huge issue in our culture. We're just really beginning to see it manifest itself, uh, with kids now. So my children are twenty-eight and twenty-three, and the difference between those, I'm sorry, twenty-eight and twenty-six. The difference between those two ages and technology is fascinating. My oldest son was in the dial-up system, and my other son was getting information faster than I could contain. And, and containing and controlling and monitoring that information effectively is one of the most important roles you now have as a parent that none of us ever thought would ever exist. Is simply too much information. Most of it not great for how they use it. It's not the information that's the problem. It's how they're using it and what they're going after. It's not the system itself. It's what they're doing with the system. Um, and I would tell you, it's as dangerous, if not more dangerous, to mental health than substance abuse for some children. There's no question about that. If I could add just one comment to that from the law enforcement perspective, we investigate a tremendous amount of, um, technology-based bullying. And some of the things that, um, are brought to our attention by either, um, students or children or, or their parents when they come to see us is just vicious. It really is, it's just vicious. I don't sit up here and, and claim to know anything about anything, but I do know that, um, it really, as Craig said, the first path uh, towards really bad behavior, um, for kids that are really just victims of that, trying to get on the right side of it when it's just completely, completely vicious. So, um, we are very proactive in that regard. Our youth division has a lot of internet-based, uh, programs, both within the Board of Education's, uh, system and also outside of that. Um, we do a lot of that. So if I had anything to add to that from a law enforcement perspective is, um, please, um, if you talk to your children, be mindful about, um, before they hit send, how really truly hurtful some of that stuff is. Thank you. On my right.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Prorock. I'm at, uh, live at twenty-nine Millor Road. Um, first things first, Chief of Police, thank you for saying no guns in the school. The last thing we need to do is add a, um, potential for any, any more danger or any, any more imminent threat to our, our children or ourselves. So definitely no firearms of any kind inside the schools. My, uh, my first question, I guess, would be to, uh, Dr. Menzo. How do you impress upon a child that's made what was more than likely a joking comment about, hey, everyone, get down? How do you impress upon them the seriousness of their words? How it's taken hold of so many in this, uh, in this country? There's probably five thousand town halls going on with, from last week through the next week, through up until the fourteenth. How do you, how do you get them to understand that people are going to react sort of in a silly way to, to something that was, uh, that was said like that? Really, I believe the child was just joking. Was it in poor taste? Eh, maybe not. But they said it with more or less an innocent intent. How do we get them to control what they're thinking, what they're saying? How do we impress upon them to say what you mean, to mean what you say at that young age? My daughter's twelve. She's a dag. I have to remind her on a daily basis. You have to think about what you say before you say it. Um, so that, that's one question. A, a second question would be, how do you include all the kids that don't want to be included? The out, not the outcasts, that's a terrible word, but, um, those who naturally exclude themselves. Maybe they go to a teacher, or maybe they go to a random person in the hallway. I, you know, personally, me, I've never thought of sharing anything with a random person. I wouldn't share with my wife. And let's face it, you know, everyone that's completely open with their personal, their significant others, that's, that's told them all their secrets, all their ideas, raise your hand. Yeah, I keep secrets from my wife. There's no secret about that.
This is being videotaped, just so you know.
Go ahead. She already knows.
Just wanted you to know.
So when, when they go to a teacher, uh, this, to my second question, when they go to a teacher and say, hey, I have a thought about, you know, this, or there's something I don't like, there's someone I don't like, there's something that happened, and that teacher takes them and gives them off to a counselor, the person that they didn't, you know, confide in, all of a sudden they're being passed off, and that's one more reason to exclude themselves from your process. It, it seems counter, very counterproductive. And I'd like to know how you might handle something like that.
Well, I'll start with the first one, impress upon them. I think we need every parent to do what you're doing with your daughter every day, which is to talk to them as a parent and be that parent with them, explaining to them. The letter I sent home just last week, encouraging parents to have those difficult conversations, um, about your actions. Big actions have big consequences. Um, unfortunately, that's a phrase that I've been using a lot lately. Um, when the student is in front of us or with an administrator, we always talk to the students about the fact that, and in addition, all those threats are reported to the police. So they're already having a consequence and a conversation with the police. They might receive a summons, whatever it might be. So there's that level of consequence. Um, so the student who actually is the one who did, who unfortunately made the offense, they're the ones that we, you know, we have to impress upon them, obviously, working with their families, that there was a mistake. We do have to give them consequences for that. We also have to understand that, like you said, maybe the student didn't mean it, um, which nine out of ten times they don't. We also have to balance that, that they are students and they are learning. Um, so we have to do that balance. In terms of the preventative measure, again, it's continually messaging from administrators. Last week on Tuesday, we had Credit for Life. Last week on Tuesday, we had Credit for Life. I had all the sophomores. I had a captive audience at Park and Rec. And I gave them about a three-minute to four-minute lecture on just exactly what you just said. I explained to them that just because you think it's funny, just because you see it on the news, just because there's some YouTube person making money off of commercials, doesn't mean you should do it because most likely you're not going to be that funny, you're not going to be that famous, you're going to be in trouble. And so the fact is that we have to be candid with the students, but we have to also rely on everybody. Um, again, it can't be the responsibility, and I know you're not suggesting that it's solely the school's responsibility, but we have to support families. Um, oftentimes I'll even get calls from families, I know administrators, that the family needs us to meet with them with their child to help support the message. And we'll do that. We're Social Services. We'll help in any way possible. Um, so really, it's continuing the message through health class, through morning meeting at the elementary schools, um, through our health classes at the middle schools and high schools, through all of our events to just continue to express the message that this is serious. Um, way I equate the situation that occurred, it was like crying, you know, fire in a movie theater. That's not allowed. You can't do that. It raises a level of concern. Again, we were able to ascertain the situation, so it didn't spread to a large extent. Um, so we were fortunate. But we have to continue to impress upon that and send that message through all agencies. And that's why we're fortunate. We get together as a community and share these messages. Um, so that's my initial response to that question. Um, how do you include all students? I think we're very fortunate. Again, we have teachers and I do understand your point about teachers passing it off to a counselor. They don't, sometimes teachers might not feel comfortable enough with the informations being shared. And our counselors have been trained to a different level. So while it might sound like a teacher's passing it off inappropriately, in many instances, it's very appropriate because they don't have the training, they don't have the background, and they're very concerned about that child's needs. However, I did hear what you said and we can continue to talk to our staff about that feeling because I think that's a very good point. That we don't want a child to feel, well, you know, I don't really have the time for you, so I'm passing you off to a counselor. I don't ever believe that happens. Um, I think that there's a reason and we would have to talk to our staff about that uncertainty that they might experience.
It did happen to me when I was younger.
Again, um, I've only been here nine years. We're temporary.
I under, I understand that, sir. I I do believe an easier fix to that would be when you schedule the child to meet with the counselor, to have that teacher there because we all have our favorite teachers. We all had teachers that we liked. We all had teachers that we wanted to talk to. We wanted their attention more than anyone else.
You you just took a page out of the playbook, um, because that is what nine out of ten times occurs. And I think if you asked our high school administrators and middle school administrators, that would be what they say. Uh, we have what are called our SRBI teams, um, or what was used to be called Student Assistance Teams. There's always a teacher that connects with that student on at that meeting to talk about that student's needs. Because you want to have that commonality. You're absolutely right. That personal connection needs to be there. Um, so I totally agree with you, but it's an area that we need to continue to grow in. I don't deny that whatsoever. Um, getting every student involved, that's an ongoing challenge. Um, you know.
It's actually not too hard to get your students or your children involved. A simple opening question to them, how are you today, is amazing at opening up their uh willingness to share anything with you. And from there, they build on it and they go. So it's, it's, I don't want to say this is the airplane stewardess mentality of, hi, welcome aboard, hi, welcome aboard. But for teachers to include those who might become excluded through either social interactions or by their own choosing, that's one way to, you know, keep them with. And we need to, you need to add that to your.
It's again, absolutely. It's happening with morning meeting at our elementary schools. So they're sitting in the circles, um, they're having conversations. Also at the middle school, I would, I would say, when you go into a middle school, um, the teachers are in the hallways constantly stopping students, saying hello. High school is the same way. Um, teachers are always looking to engage students. Can we always do better? Of course. But there has been a tremendous amount of hard work on the part of our teachers. Um, so, but I I hear what you're saying. I think that I used to, when I was principal in Weathersfield at the middle school, we used to say the Walmart mentality. Good morning, the smiling face, leave your problems in the car. You're here now to work with your students. And I believe our staff really has that belief also. Um, I know that because I get beautiful emails. We honored over ninety staff members across our district last year with Parent Choice Awards because of things exactly like you're explaining. So we do need to continue to grow in that area. I think all of us do. Um, and I think your tip right there, again, when a parent might pick their child up or a grandparent or a neighbor, how was your day? Having that initiation, that sentence, that conversation starter, that is an excellent idea. And we need to do that with our staff too. So I I I really appreciate your comments. Um, and I'm glad our administrators are here because I know um we are constantly talking about this. So I really thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. On my left?
Uh, my name is Tyler DePino. I live at sixty-five Terrace Gardens. I am a junior at Limon Hall High School. I was also part of that group uh that came here uh last Wednesday to discuss some of the same issues we're discussing here. I'd like to thank the school district for allowing students to to although they may not agree on a lot of issues, to be able to take action and to be able to lead a charge in the direction that the school community and town, as well as the state and the nation as a whole, is attempting to to go towards uh by that student-driven action and by allowing them to speak their minds on these issues, whether they agree or not, as long as it is done respectfully. Um, I would also like to um say that uh later in the school year, uh, I know we talked about it both at the meeting and I, although I'm not at this time part of the student council, at Limon Hall Student Council, last student council meeting discussed it, uh, having uh voter registration, uh, either come later in the year most likely because uh more students will be seventeen at the time. And um having the opportunity for students to write either political or apolitical letters to either uh local or state officials um in some sort of letter-writing session session. But um the question I would like to propose is um if if a student is identified as a being have having, there's a possibility of that student having some sort of uh mental disorder issue or or they may be excluded socially or self-excluded. If if that student refuses to cooperate um and they are, may very well be considered a risk to other students or themselves. How would um you go about dealing with that situation, even even if there is no necessary offense such as a lunch detention, after-school detention, suspension or expulsion? Because um that student doesn't, you can't force that student to open up to to anyone. So if that student refuses to, but they may ver- very well be seen as a threat to themselves or others, how would you deal with that if there's no necess, there's not necessarily a background to be able to carry out consequences towards that student?
Well, what we would do is, uh, first of all, if we feel any child has any uh inclination of doing harm to himself or herself or others, uh, we would call immediately the Mobile Crisis Unit at two-one-one. Um, they would do an emergency assessment of the student. Um, and that engages the family right away. Um, they have to assess the student. It's a psychological assessment uh and evaluation. Oftentimes, depending on the severity, the student would be transported potentially to the hospital for further evaluation. Upon returning, we would get information. We would call what's called a PPT, a Planning and Placement Team Meeting, um, because we'd want to um identify if the student is specialized already, then we would obviously have that already in place, an individual education plan that might be addressed. If the student is, this is the first time, we'd want to call a team together, determine whether or not there's additional evaluations that need to be done to make certain that that student is safe and also his or her peers are safe. The challenge that happens in Connecticut, and I I think this is a little-known topic, and the mayor and I have had several conversations about this, and so have some counselors and other representatives in the room, is that Connecticut has what's known as the burden of proof on the school district when it comes to special education. So we're one of few, very few states, I think one of only two states in the fifty states um in the United, the continental U.S. that um we talk about the fact that if a student has an issue, the school district could bring resources forward, present those to the family. The family does not have to accept those resources. Um, and what would end up happening is the school district could go to a hearing. They can go to what's called the due process hearing. That takes a long time. Um, in most states, the school district will be the ones that don't have to defend their determination. The parents are on the other side um in those circumstances where they have to defend their determination. Um, it's a challenge because I could see both sides of it. I could see sometimes parents of students with special needs being concerned that school districts might not be doing what's best for their child for providing a free, appropriate public education. But in circumstances like this, um, we do have to take action. And we, as a district, if we feel that there's any threat, we work again with authorities. Um, and we also um make certain that we impress upon families. We could work with DCF. We could work with a variety of resources. Um, and we we have access access those resources. Um, so again, I know it's a, it's a stressful conversation and it's something that does come to our mind. Um, but we're very fortunate. And I, and again, going back to a series of questions, the key thing we need is people like yourself, parents, teachers, all of our certified, non-certified staff, if they see something, they have to say something. Don't tweet it out, don't text it to somebody, don't put it on Facebook. You need to come to the professionals. Um, come to, you have, you know, if you don't want to come to the schools because you're afraid, you know, concerned about repercussions or anything like that, go to Youth and Social Services, the Coalition for Better Wallingford, you know, people that could at least give you some ideas. Go to the police department. I know that's maybe counterintuitive, but we need you to say something. We have a tremendous amount of resources in our community. We could always have more. But we want to be able to put those in place. So I hope that clarified a little bit for you.
And then aside from my question, I would also like to, uh, what you were saying to the uh last gentleman who spoke um about the student support systems being set up, I I myself, I'm I'm not afraid to share this. I'm, I am um in one of those SRVI teams and I will be attending that um that group dictated for students who have may have undergone grief or trauma. And I feel as if the school is definitely taking, or the the district is definitely taking steps toward uh inclusion of all students and by the means of them feeling as if they're not isolated and and that they do have a support system in some manner. And that they're opening up new, these new opportunities for students to be able to um succeed. Like as my, as myself, I I was completely, I was failing as um some people here may know, such as uh Mr. Turner. Um, I was, I was failing.
So Tyler, let me just step in for you here. Tyler is a tremendous success story. That's what you need to know.
Well, playing into that, I uh I was failing all of my classes. I was able to go to the SRVI team. And although everything may not have helped me, there were, there were some things that, and there were some actions taken by by the school and the district that aided me in being able to succeed in school, as I now have all As and Bs. And I will be able to pass through without having to stay back. Thank you.
Thank you. So uh we are closing in on eight P M. And what I'm going to say is this, there are four people on each side standing. And um we'll take questions from the eight of you and then we'll uh adjourn the meeting. Sir in the black suit?
John Saretta, One Corey Road, North Haven, Connecticut. I've been an educator here for thirty years. One of the things that I like to be able to say to the parents that are in the audience, uh, we treat your children as if they are our own. And we have them for six hours a day. And sometimes it becomes extremely stressful. Uh, two weeks ago, for example, when we had the fire drill uh right before we were supposed to get out of school at uh twelve fifteen, um, I give you an example, cafeteria was filled, the fire alarm went off. I jumped into action. I took ninety-two kids out through my door and we got them at the time, we thought, to safety. Because everything was so raw with the things that happened the couple of days before. So as an educator, talking to parents, I want you to know that we do the best that we possibly can do for your kids. And that's just the way it should be. Going along those lines, one of the things that I think that we should have for teachers, we should have a PD day where basically the entire staff goes and we are trained as to what we need to be able to do. I can tell you on that, I I can tell you on that, that Friday, nerves were raw in our building. People were afraid. They didn't know what was actually going on. But we got through the day. We did what had to be done for our students. Uh, also, if any of you know, I teach at DAG, as I said, I'm on bus duty. I've been there thirty years. I'm out there when it's twenty-five below zero and I'm out there when it's a hundred and five. We make sure that sixteen to eighteen buses of children get off, get into the building, get escorted into the building. And the same thing at the end of the day, making sure that they get to the proper bus so that they can go home. I understand that it's a very, very tough duty. I love it. I I I've been there, as I said, thirty years. I love the kids. My responsibility, I understand, is to take care of the children. That's priority number one. All I think that we're asking is that as a group of over six hundred people, not counting the uh ancillary staff, we would like to be able to have the training to know what to do in a situation. Now, one of the things that was just mentioned tonight, and I wrote it down, for example, I didn't even think of that until somebody mentioned it early on, a contractor coming into the building. So, okay, they get buzzed in, they have their tool bucket with them. What do we know what's in their tool bucket? They could be a contractor that has come in seventeen times in the, in that year. And all it could be is just that one time that something is put into that bucket. How do we know? So what kind of protocol do we need to have in place to be able to check a workman's tools? I know it sounds foolish, but in today's world, this is where we're at. So if we're at at this point, this is what we need to be able to do. Also, as far as I believe that we should have our entryways hardened. Our entries to the building should be bullet resistant. As terrible as that sounds, if we can't do the rest of the building, at least the main entryways to our buildings should have some bullet-resistant glass to be able to stop somebody shooting their way in. As an example, I know that there is a uh bid that just came out and it's going out and it came to bid for three schools for window replacement, four schools for window replacement in Wallingford. Not one in the specs, and I could be wrong, is there bullet-resistant glass.
Yeah, you are wrong. Unfortunately, I don't mean to say it that way, but we did put an addendum um that does, it's not bullet resistance, so you have to be, there's.
Bullet resistant, which which I understand.
So we did put an addendum.
All right. And then last but not least, I won't take any more time. I think another thing, the biggest thing is that we should have all of our locks changed so that a teacher has the ability to lock their door from the inside. Because we have locks and anybody could actually get in through our door. If our door opens inward, you know, we're, we're sitting ducks, I hate to say in that sense. But again, to me, the biggest thing is we need to have the PD training, just like the police department and the fire department, the first responders that we are the front line before the police department or the fire department get there. We need to be able to know what we need to do.
Just to clarify, Mr. Saretta, I just want to clarify because I don't think you're saying that you don't, you haven't heard about how to handle a lockdown or a fire.
Correct.
So what you're training, I just want to contextualize this because this is something that's been on the school security plan agenda since uh probably early this fall, which we're in the final stages of bringing to the board, getting more training regarding active intruders, um, which there's a program called Alice Training.
Correct.
So I just wanted to clarify because I don't want anybody to leave here tonight that teachers haven't received any emergency management training
Agreed.
about any of those other circumstances. What this is, it's an actual training that gives teachers more information, all of our educators in our schools, certified and non-certified educators, clerical supporter, everyone, more training um as to if a situation occurs, how do they respond potentially if the intruder comes into proximity with him or her as an, as a participant or our staff. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I agree.
So we do have a proposal that'll be going forward. We actually just discussed this today. Um, our committee prior to unfortunate tragedy at Parkland was already going to be making that recommendation. So that will be on the books. As you know, our professional development days, full days, are over for the year. Um, so that's a little bit of planning for next year. The other thing is in terms of um, you mentioned about the doors and the locks. Um, I do know that several schools, and I believe um even DAG, but if not, we could definitely add it to our list. There are other mechanisms that we provided so teachers can leave their doors locked at all times. They pull the magnetic strip and the door locks. So I don't want to, again, leave people with the understanding that teachers can't lock their doors or they haven't been um, you know, situated in a way that the doors can lock immediately, that a teacher has to go in the hallway to do that. That was an initial problem when we first addressed this back uh during Newtown. Um, so that's been resolved. I think what you're recommending is a larger, full-scale changeout, which again, we had to take the interim steps, which has the same outcome, which is the doors lock. to take the interim steps, which has the same outcome, which is the door is locked from the inside so the person couldn't get it from the outside. So again, just because I know people will be watching this at home, I don't want to leave any parents with the mindset that our doors don't lock in classrooms or that teachers have to necessarily always put themselves in a harm way to lock the door. So I just wanted to share that. But I do agree, the Alice Training is something that we talked about today, we also did talk about the glass and we talked about other ideas we are going to be investigating, there's a variety of different things out there. So we made a list today, we vetted it with this group as well as some of our teachers that are in the committee and administrators. And I know that your building, because all, just so everybody knows, all of our administrators either met directly or informally with their staff to get their ideas because they're the ones that are in the trenches every day. And I've created a master list and we're going through methodically, one by one, to determine, and we're looking to bring in a volunteer from our community, a parent who has offered his services, who works in this field, to share with the committee some of these alternatives. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Tureen, I live on Ryan Drive here in Wallingford. And I want to just first, two comments, two quick questions. First comment, thank you for the discussion that came up earlier with trying to understand who's responsible for educating our kids, what's right and wrong to say. And when we point fingers, just try to remember, there's three fingers pointing back at me as a parent, we have responsibilities to, and I'm glad you guys brought that up. I mean, it's not, the onus isn't just on you all, so thank you. And also, thank you for, all of you, for being so proactive in taking not just this hearing, but all of the plans that you've shared and that you've worked on. My first question along those lines is, I believe there's a fine line between underestimating and overreacting. And that fine line unfortunately is not static. And it seems like every week that goes by and month that goes by, it tends to rise. So my question is, how do you manage that? How do you try to not overreact nor underreact? Number one. The second question along those lines, some may argue being overreacting, but I'm glad the comment came up earlier, but I'd like to hear the feedback on whether metal detectors, the ramifications of metal detectors in schools. I'm sure there's a lot and we don't have a lot of time, but I'd like to hear a little bit about that.
So to your first question, even as recent as last week, who would have ever thought that someone would drive their car through the front door of the emergency room over at Middlesex Hospital, right? So from a law enforcement perspective, we are continually evaluating through our own resources and through intelligence resources across the country and really across the world, those initiatives that are on the radar, if you will, right? And they are ever-changing. And that is a constant battle that we're willing to fight, right? Because we should and we have to. And things have become more serious, right? So our training changes and our knowledge levels to our partners where if the Fire Chief and I are on the phone four or five times a day, that's uncommon, right? So because a lot of what they respond to, we're there right alongside them. So the only thing I can offer you is that our continual effort to be prepared, right, is ever-evolving and changing, right? So to your second question about metal detectors from a law enforcement perspective, it would take an incredible amount of staffing in the schools to manage that, right? To have each and every student and each and every staff member pass through a metal detector, both in and out, right, when they're leaving for the day or coming back from a meeting in another part of the district, is incredibly consuming for resources. So where they are present in a number of cities already, you need the support staff there to manage that. Last week and late in the week before that, I was at Sheehan High School in the morning as a result of those two incidents that were there, just briefly. But the amount of pedestrian traffic that flows into the rear of Sheehan High School as school is getting ready to start for the day is incredible. And how there's not a four or five car wreck in the parking lot every morning is really beyond me. And to try to manage that, you know, all joking aside, to try to manage that would be a daunting, daunting task from a law enforcement perspective.
So if I could respond to your question of overestimating and underestimating, overreacting, so that also applies in the mental health field quite a bit and I think there are some similarities. So the real key is assessment and having as much accurate information in a timely fashion that you can have when people are involved. Now, the context is the context and you just simply need to know that. And most of what you heard in terms of protocols and practices relate to the environment because every time you have a situation, the people are different. So one of the biggest assets that we have to handle a situation involving people is knowing the person, how well we know that individual. And that's a very difficult thing to wrap your head around when I might have information about a child that I can't talk to you about, the school system may have information about a child that they can't talk to me about, the Police Department has information they can't talk to anyone about. And if we were all able to put our heads together, we probably have an ability to accurately assess more effectively what the risk factor is when certain children are doing what they're doing. If you think back to some of the more traumatic stories that you've heard in the news and the follow-up information on the children involved, we're all surprised that how did that happen, right? There was so much in that kid's life that made it evident that that was a possibility or at least something that people should have been aware of. And even knowing the information guarantees nothing, but it increases the likelihood of accurately assessing, which reduces the underestimating as well as the overreaction. So the reason I'm bringing this to your attention is because the two groups of people that know more than anyone about the kids in this town are the kids in this town and the parents of the kids in this town because it's a community-based issue. So we do as much as we can, trust me when I tell you, I've worked with all these people, I've been here 20 years, we do as much as we can with the information we have. We don't hide it from anybody unless we're not allowed to talk about it. You don't have that exclusion, I'm happy to tell you, does not apply to you. You can talk to us about anybody and anything at any time and the likelihood of you being the primary agent that creates our ability, increases dramatically our ability to accurately assess, is immeasurable. It's immeasurable. So just consider that in terms of our ability to accurately estimate any situation, mental health, violence, internet threats, whatever it is. You guys have more information than we do, we concede that fact, we have to, we call it investigation to get information our end. You call it, dude, everybody knows that story, how could you not know? I hear that all the time from parents and kids, how could you not know? Well, because I'm not in a position to hear that, I don't live in town, I'm not a parent in town, my kids didn't grow up in town. So unless people in town let me know what's going on, and we are fortunate that many do, it's a disservice to the community in the sense that we're a part of the problem instead of being a part of the solution.
Just, oh, I was just going to chime in really quickly. At the Health Department, we never view too much in terms of preparedness, we love planning, we like to drill a lot. What I would say is this, is that while we are looking at doing active shooter trainings, we look at this as, I know this is a Board of Ed type meeting, but we look at this as a community issue. So the Health Department is offering on March 27th from 5:30 to 7:30 and April 11th from 5:30 to 7:30, active shooter trainings in cooperation with the Wallingford Police Department, which we've done two last year, but this is more for workplace, it's separate from the Board of Ed, which they're looking at their own type of Alice-type training, it's a unique building when you're looking at that, but we did want to also put out that we have this available to the community. So those will be going out to the public soon, but I did want to mention it here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Tadda, 751 North Farms Road. Actually, that was a great segue because I think what the Board of Ed is doing, there's a lot of ideas, a lot of things that you're doing that I wasn't aware of that I think are, I'm sure, are reducing the likelihood of a tragedy happening. So I was glad to hear all that tonight. But my concern is that, I mean, we're a huge town, we can't keep tabs on every single person's mental stability in this town or even surrounding towns. So, you know, if somebody, God forbid, wants to do something terrible, you know, despite a metal detector, despite, you know, it could happen, they'll find a way, which we've seen multiple times unfortunately. I know before it was brought up about having armed security guards in the schools and that seems like that's not something that was looked on too positively. But I know that in North Branford, the schools have retired police officers who are armed, I believe, in their schools, they've been doing that for several years now. I've talked to some other people, I know I talked to Mrs. Corso, she works in a school that has a resource officer. And I was just wondering if that is something that was looked at, that could be looked at, or is that something that's just completely off the table? I just think in this situation, you know, we all can agree, seconds matter. And God forbid, somebody gets in there despite all of our best efforts, you know, seconds matter. And I know in Florida, there was an armed security guard there and it didn't seem to be too effective, but I just didn't know if the Board of Ed had looked at any research on that and maybe if not, could look at that just as another option, something else we could maybe take a look at.
Yes, SROs, we've been requesting for three years now in our budget. That, we had a conversation a couple of years ago, probably now going on three years with the Town Council, that would come, we make a recommendation, I always talk every year to the chief, we kind of talk about that particular piece because it would be, usually SROs are police officers from town. So that's something that's always in our strategic plan, it was brought up again this year. So the Board does have a desire to continue to pursue that and we're hopeful that there might be some federal grants that might help us in that avenue. We also are open to other conversations, I do know that North Branford did start that. At that time, we did look into some of that information, we did not pursue that because it was the first of its kind, to be honest. But again, I think everything is open for consideration at this time.
Great, thank you.
So my name is Carolyn Lawrence-Crico, I am at 6 South Side Drive in Wallingford. I went to school in our community at a time when we actually did have an officer in school with us. We had a pretty strong DARE program, that officer was onsite all the time, I believe just in our school, if not, he spent a lot of time there. So one of the things I wanted to talk about is I did have an opportunity two years ago to work with many of you on what was considered the Wallingford Promise. It was a great experience, I saw, you know, many of you there, still here, thank you. But my question really stems from bridging that promise and making sure that it's being applied consistently throughout the schools with the Police Department and making sure that our youth officers either get the opportunity to expand their program, they are vital to our current system, as well as kind of funding that resource. I know budget is really hot topic in all aspects, but I do think having those officers onsite, especially at the middle school level, is really, really vital. So there's, and do we have that allocated? Do we have that funding? We just talked about having some security resource officers, which is great, and I think we kind of have double duty there where we can look at expanding those resources.
So to answer your question, present tonight are Sergeant Shelley Shinselsky from the Community Policing Unit and Amanda Miranda, one of our youth officers who truly spend, well, for Shelley, 85 or 90% of her day with her team is in one school or another. And for Amanda Miranda and her assistant youth officer, that's all they do, right? So they are highly competent people, well-trained. And to your question about programs, I'm not sure how many that you're referring to that used to take place, but I can tell you that it's probably well over 100 between their two divisions. Never mind the things that we try to accomplish when school is not in session. Some of you know, if you don't know, we try to do as much as we can from a law enforcement perspective when school is closed, our presence in the school for any other reason than an effective program is disruptive. So we try to handle the law enforcement issues when school is closed. But while school is open, we are continually in and out of those schools all day long. I can't imagine the man-hours that we spend weekly on the programs that we have in place.
I agree. So do we have enough bodies in place to implement those programs? Because I think we have two to three officers right now in four schools.
Microphone, please.
Sorry.
It's all right, thank you.
Person.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that we're allocating funding to that resource, right? And then also on touching upon the Wallingford Promise piece, you know, are we continuing with that promise and then making sure that it's being consistently applied and having our officers involved in that promise?
I think that in what we've transitioned is, as was mentioned earlier by Steve from the Health Department, is that we've tried to put it under the umbrella of a healthy Wallingford. So we've committed to those aspects of that and that's going to continue to unfold and the Police Department are at that table for all those conversations as we look to spread our programming. So our first phase, as I mentioned earlier, was to choose kindness and we've really looked at social media. Everybody at this table has been part of those conversations and part of our programming. So we're trying to do it in a collaborative community impact model where we have greater power together than as separate individuals. So it is moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Tiosio, 718 North Farms Road.
Tricia Whitmore, 52, Calhoun Road.
I guess I have more of a question towards mental health. My daughter is in third grade and this year she was involved in a situation in her classroom where a classmate threatened to murder the teacher and gave specific direction as how he's going to murder some of her classmates. My daughter now sees many therapists and is medicated and her facial tics are out of control. And I don't feel like, I guess I wish that someone reached out to me and told me what was going on in her classroom. I had to find out, as was said before, you guys all have to keep your lips sealed and I respect that and I think I showed my respect to the folks that helped my daughter and I so far through this process. But when are you going to find a way to help me protect my daughter? Because I knew nothing. This started in September. I was told not until November that she was physically harmed by this child. And nothing's in place for my daughter. Nothing is in place for my little girl.
There's no safety plan in place?
It is now, when he was finally.
That was a couple of months ago.
Removed from the classroom because I said my daughter will not be allowed back in that classroom until that child is removed.
Yeah, no, and again, this is a very sensitive issue.
They put him in another area of the school, but still allowed him on the playground with her, which is one of the most unsupervised days, times of their day. All I want to know, it's done, it's done, the damage is done. What's in place for those children? My daughter, her daughter. Because just this morning, she couldn't go to school, she was out today. Just two weeks ago, she couldn't get the right clothes on to go to the dance because she didn't look good because this child told her she was too fat. In January, she started shaving her arms because he said her arms are too hairy. How do I protect her when no one's telling me she's being harmed? I just want to know how to protect all my children, that's all I want.
And these kids have heard and seen things that no third grader should have to see at school. So we're just looking for answers for in the future, how we could be more aware of what's going on in our kids' classroom.
So as I think we would all agree is that obviously working with the teachers to continue to make certain that when things like this happen, they're continued to be reported, which I believe they were. I believe that there was, the teacher reported, not necessarily, I'm not saying to you, so don't.
We never knew anything.
Again, working with the teacher to reestablish and making sure that we're in the right place with that. Again, I think that it's a matter of that vigilance, it's a matter. It's a matter of making certain that everyone knows their responsibility, and that's what we continue to do. And I think that you would agree that that's a key to this, is that everybody not only knows their responsibility, but takes the responsibility, which is communicating directly with families, be it through the administrator or through the teacher directly, but having that communication. I think that's number one, communication. I think we could, probably the three of us could agree, is essential. I think in terms of other aspects of this, again, you know, the safety plans, once we are aware, once you're aware, the safety plans have to be put in place, and they have to be monitored, as I believe they are. So, the challenge again, and it kind of, the mayor and I had a conversation today, it's just being able to have and getting the information in the hands of the right people. In this case, you as parents, and also in other potential professionals in the building. But again, I think the staff, I don't, I'm not here to speak about whether or not staff handle it directly, positively or negatively, because it's not for me to judge.
They did a wonderful job.
So I think that they, I think they did a great job. I think that unfortunately, in these circumstances, it's a growing challenge. And I think that there are additional supports that we need, and that's why we're recommending for our students. And believe me, I probably could go out on a limb saying that no parent of any child wants to have that child that caused these challenges for your child.
Absolutely.
Nobody ever gives.
Very sympathetic along the way. And I think there are people in this room that can vouch for us.
Absolutely. No, and I wanted to commend, I was getting around to commend you guys.
That's somebody's baby.
It was a long road, but I was trying to get there.
It was a very long road.
So, no, I was trying to get to commend. So the thing is that you did approach it that way. We need your help to continue to look at our system, and I think there's been conversations about that, you giving us feedback. I know you've offered it. We listen to that. You know, we work on other projects together. It's not a deaf ear. It's just that these are, these are new experiences for a lot of us in our community. These are new experiences that we need to hear. Unfortunately, it's not always going to be perfect, but we have to learn from that. We can't allow it to happen again. And that's exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we have to, we've been working as a staff, with our special ed staff. We've been, there's been training that's been going on. We just had a whole nother round of the state coming in to do a whole nother round of bullying training just yesterday, a full-day training for staff. So we've been really trying to, we exceed the expectations of the state, and maybe they're too low. But the fact is, we can't have what happened to any child. And so, we are committed to do that, but we also need your continued feedback. And I know you're willing to give it, and we're willing to take it. We have never shut away.
Never.
So please, make sure you continue, but we need you part of that team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Conti, 29 Gregory Road. I'm also a teacher at Sheen High School. I am also the parent of two children in the school system. My son is at Sheen High School with me, and my daughter's at Marion. And I'm glad that some people have raised the issue of keeping us kids, our kids safe when something actually does happen. If an active shooter occurs, I would assume it would take three minutes for the officers to get to our school? Four?
Potentially.
Potentially. A lot of damage could be done in that three minutes, as we could see what happens in schools across the country. What I'm asking is for the community to have a conversation, to have a paradigm shift, that it could happen here. It really can happen here. And as a community, the town, the Board, the school district, parents, we have to think about really committing to preventing that from happening. And I'm glad that someone raised the issue of having a resource officer armed in the school. I'm fully aware that you're against having people armed in the school, and I agree, I'm a teacher, I don't want to be armed. I don't want that responsibility, and I agree with that. But when the high school has a dance, when they have a big function, lots of people, we're required to have an armed police officer there. But 180 days of the year, 1,000 kids in my building, there's nobody. That doesn't make sense, okay? For 180 days a year, our children are vulnerable to some lunatic coming into the class, into our school and doing harm. And we have four minutes. I'm asking the community to seriously think about funding a resource officer in both high schools, or at least even an armed security guard, something to stop someone from doing harm to our children. Okay, the gun debate is outside, as outside. We have to protect our kids now. And I'm coming from a selfish position. I have my son in the building. If something happens in the building, I'm taking care of the kids in my classroom, but I don't know what's going on with my kid. If I notice a resource officer in the school, that if something does happen, the chance of limited damage is going to be reduced. Okay, if something was done in Florida, seventeen might have been only two. Okay, as awful as two is, it's not seventeen. So I'm asking the Town Council, the Board, the departments of the town, the community as a whole, to seriously think about this. It could happen here. And we need to stop it as soon as possible if it does happen. I agree with the teacher that we need training. We need to, I'm glad that I heard Alice train. I'm so glad about that. We need to teach the kids how to defend themselves. Okay, we need to teach the kids how to defend themselves. If you're involved in an active shooter, run if you can and get up, then hide. Your last option is to fight. You're not going to let the person just mow everybody down. You got to train these kids to do something. Throw books, throw desks, barricade them. Teach them to do something to survive these events. If we're not teaching those kids that, they're ducks, they're sitting ducks. And we have to know that as a community, that this could happen here. And I'm glad this forum is going on, and I'm hopeful that this conversation will continue, and it will come to fruition, that we, our kids will be safe, that we'll take the idea of a resource officer in our high schools seriously, and commit as a town to funding that, or getting grants from the federal government. Okay, we should have a grant writer do that. I'm not sure if we hire, or you do that, okay? Well, good luck, all right?
But with all their support.
Right. So I, as a teacher in the building, advocate that. I, as a parent of two kids in the district, advocate that. And I hope many people in this town and the council will consider this, and also want to protect our kids and prevent damage from happening. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Brian Shaw. I live at 5 Haller Avenue. It's kind of hard to go after him, because that was amazing. I do think that you guys have really been very informative tonight, and I learned a lot of things that I didn't know about programs that you had in place, not just for safety, but for also mental health. And I just kind of want to put a plea out there that you don't stop. Because I have a child in high school, and there is a lot of, as you said, depression, and thoughts of suicide, and acts of attempted suicide that are going on in our schools, and it's very scary as a parent. Not necessarily my child who's doing that, but my child's also been the recipient of being a friend trying to stop the person on a couple of occasions this year alone. And that's a lot of stress on my child, as well as the stress of the child we love that we don't want anything to happen to. And I hear you have a lot of programs in place. And from being as an adult, it sounds really great, but one of the students here said, you also need the kids' involvements. Because you know what? They don't want to go to the guidance counselors. They don't want people to know, but yet, it can't just be one friend that knows and has that responsibility weighing on them. And, and I love my daughter, and I'm proud of what she's done, and I'm proud that the children are okay, that we've been in the situation. But when I was going through this, I was told there was five other incidences of friends, not in our particular school, not even in our town. But just, that's a lot of attempted suicides, or thought of suicide. And, and I'm grateful that we're starting young, because I think it's very important to get mental health help to the younger children. And I have another child who needed that help very early on, and I see tremendous growth in her from that help. So I, and I got that from the schools, actually. I did get some help from our schools when she was in elementary school, and I feel that's made such a difference. But the older kids are tough, as you've said. The internet stuff, the social media, it's really tough. And if you can just keep thinking, and maybe, I don't know if you have programs where kids are involved in this, where they can give you more ideas on, okay, I'm sorry, I'm not going to go to you, you know? Or, or just something like that, because it's a lot. And, I mean, I know I've heard you say you are doing a lot, and I'm very grateful for all that you're doing, but it's still happening. And I, is there any other options that you could think of? Or, or plans that you have that could even keep expanding it?
I think, and I appreciate your comments, and I applaud you and your daughter and your family for helping those other students. We do get a lot of those calls. Actually, just recently, on a late, on a Friday afternoon, I received a phone call from a family, and we activated our resources right away to help out. I think that we're continuing to work from a mental health standpoint, but our health and wellness curriculum person is really working with our health teachers to really look at what programming we could put in place for our students. I think this survey that Mr. Turner mentioned at the beginning is essential. We cannot stop giving that to our students every two years.
I think they feel free to tell you there.
Exactly.
It's anonymous.
Anonymous, yeah. So the thing is that we can't allow ourselves to stop that just because data might change, we might all be patting ourselves on the back, yes, we did something. No, that has to stay, because remember, the children change. And we can't just assume one group of children is going to respond to interventions, or services, or programs in the same way that the last group. So we have to continue to be committed. We're constantly looking for programming. We try to access resources from other school districts. We work collaboratively with our partnering towns that are contiguous to our town. We work with the State Department, we're constantly looking. Right now, I think the key thing is we need to continue to make those connections, like you're saying, with the high school students. And Julia's comments resonate so much with us, that we need to look at how we tap into that. There's Pairs Helping Pairs, or Peer Supporting Peer Program that Youth Services had, we has, we need to leverage that. We have Leadership Academies in our schools. We need to leverage those students. So it's a matter of coordinating those efforts. And the students, and I said this to them when they came here the other day, that it wasn't a one-shot deal. Just as I said, with some other students who have potentially the unfortunate opportunity to meet with me, they're stuck with me also. And they're stuck with the administrators and staff that were here that day to bring them back and reengage them. So this is not a done conversation. And I think it's actually the same thing that has happened since, unfortunately, the tragedy at Sandy Hook. Our town did not stop planning and preparing. And I think that that's something, it might not have been in the newspaper every day, or focused as a positive story, but we did not stop meeting. We did not stand still just because we said, oh, two years passed, three years passed. We kept planning, and we kept improving. And I think that the other key part of it, and I, again, we have our strategic plan. Our strategic plan continues to evolve based on the students that are with us at this time. It's not a static plan, because most districts do a five-year plan. It sits on a shelf for five years. Those kids change during those five years. You don't have the same resources. We look at ours three times a year, our strategic plan.
And it's not just always either the kid you would think that might be the one in trouble. It could be the kid with the great family. It could be the kid that you don't know what's going on in their lives. And outside, teachers might not know. Or people might not know, because they don't want anyone to know. They don't want their family drama brought out into the public, you know? So if there's just avenues, you're doing a great job. I really feel you guys.
We could always do better, please. We need your help.
Yeah, we just don't stop.
So there are a couple of avenues that I would briefly mention. Because I will tell you, up front, the state actually takes a very serious look at suicide, because it is a leading cause of death in this state for children, and teenagers and young adults. So the limiting step, which we know the research tells us about kids who find out and try to figure it out themselves, and may tell their parents, is they don't have someone they trust as an adult to talk to about that. That's the limiting step. So I can tell you that our office is a very trustworthy group of people. One of the most trustworthy is sitting over in the front row. And Marion has been working with kids in the district for longer than I've lived in the state of Connecticut. And she knows kids, and I know kids. And we have other referral resources that we use that are specifically trained in the issue of suicide. So those are all available, and I'm not sure we have done necessarily a great job letting people know that that is out there, and we can access that. That information, here's the limiting step. Once we hear it, it's not confidential. It's one of the few pieces of information that if we know a child's going to hurt themselves or another person, we are obligated to respond to that, to get them help, or to notify someone to protect the other person if we know it's going to hurt someone else. And that's the resistance for children. They don't want to rat out their friend, not realizing that it may be the best thing that they could do, because there's an automatic system that the school uses, that we use for emergency mobile psych for both adults and children, that will come quickly and do the appropriate assessment and determination and decision as to whether that child or adult's going to be hospitalized and what that is going to look like. So I want to assure you, that's the better option than wondering what will happen if I don't, because there's a lot of guilt. I've met with those children that have experienced that guilt for not making the best decision. It's much harder to live with that than the fact that the person gets help in a hospital or in another facility. And I would encourage any of you, if you have any cause for concern, to contact my office. I'd be happy to talk to anybody about that. Suicide is a very sensitive area, and it's not an easy one to train children to understand to begin with, because they generally don't ever believe it's really going to happen. That's one of the other limiting steps.
Do you have posters up in guidance, or posters in the hallways that have an 800 number, or anonymous number, or something for kids?
We do have a lot of resources in guidance. We do have our anonymous tip line that we need to.
For kids to know about it.
We need to continue to message that. You know, we're continuing to look at how we can continue to do that. But again, I think that it's a matter of, you know, educating everyone that the resources exist, and I think that's a constant flow of information that we need to continue to message, and we need to do a better job. I think every district could say they need to do a better job, every social service agency are working together, but we will continue to try to do that.
And just as one word of further explanation. So if your child or you were to report that to us, we would be obligated to distribute that information. We're not obligated to tell anybody where we get it from.
Dr. Menzo, how many students in our school district?
We're just around 5,900 students.
So we've had a small representative of our parent and student population at this meeting, and we've had some tremendous discussion, and a nice sharing of ideas. And the one thing that I would say at the end of this meeting is that I hope we go out as a community and continue to preach, if you will, what we've preached here tonight, and the way we've done it. And so I appreciate all of your respective comments and conversation. So I offer the Board of Ed the opportunity, if they will, to adjourn their meeting first.
Thank you, Mr. Sefoni. Also, I just want to say, on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you so much for all, all of you folks coming out and expressing your ideas so articulately and your concerns. I also want to thank the administrators that represent all our schools that took time out of their personal time to come and support all of you and all of us and the gentlemen here. It is so heartwarming to, school nurses are also here, so that's important to note them, as well as building administrators. But all these departments, along with Town Council, Board of Ed, and the mayor, we can all make a difference, and we are all committed to this community. And I think that came across loud and clear tonight, so thank you. So with that, for the Board, yeah, Board of Education.
I'm sorry, but I also don't want to miss, we have our paraeducators here, because I hate to run the risk. I know we have some clerical staff. We, again, I just want to, our maintenance staff, everybody takes this very seriously, IT staff, everyone working together, so, sorry, I just had that.
Glad you said that, thank you. So on behalf of that, the Board of Ed portion of this meeting is adjourned.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from the council.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none. I declare this meeting adjourned.